Just time enough to get this on and up and running. Finally got Utopia. Sure.
Oh, you got it.
At home.
All good.
Figured out it's more expensive than my century things.
It'll be worth it.
We'll see.
Are they getting Utopia now?
What's that?
Are you getting Utopia now?
Yes.
I just.
After all of the Zoom meetings?
Yeah.
You couldn't have gotten it two years ago? Wayne's like tried.
Could not have. Yep.
I got mine last week, too.
Really? I've been enjoying mine for years.
Yours should have been a while ago. You may have had more problems than the mayor.
I don't know.
No, there were no problems hooking it up.
It was what?
There were no problems hooking it up. I was eating that town.
Oh.
Ben hooked it up.
Just noticed I forgot my mask again.
Oh.
Don't hold on for me.
Walk in here and forget this.
It went through when he washed his clothes last week. It went through the washer with us.
Okay, make sure I got the right agenda. December fourteenth. Study meeting. Good afternoon. We welcome you here to the study meeting, the West Valley City Council. We note that we have all council members participating in our meeting. Now, so full house. So, let's see, we have our minutes of December seventh. I hope they're not minutes that will live in infamy, but.
I move for approval of our December seventh minutes.
Second.
Okay, without objection, then, the minutes will be approved. And hearing no objection, the minutes are approved unanimously. Okay. Then, review of our regular agenda for later tonight and the special redevelopment agency meetings. Yeah, of that's going to be held, we're holding the one tonight.
We do have a number of informational changes or added information stuff, Mayor.
Yeah, there were, there were several changes on issues, and so we can talk about those. Which one do you want to take first?
So, at the top of the agenda, GPZ fifteen dash twenty twenty one, we just have some further information. I thought it might be good to have Steve, excuse me, Steve come up and kind of present to you what's going on there. So, this is the general plan and zone change over on fifty-four fifty west. That's okay, Mayor.
Okay. Council Steve Pastrick, Community Development Department. So, with this general plan zone change, you recall last week, there was quite a bit of discussion about whether there should be curb gutter and sidewalk installed as part of the development. So, we did go back and speak with the developer and the, the reason their, their preference would be the developers' preference to not install the curb gutter and sidewalk is that there are some mature trees along the street that would need to be removed if the curb gutter and sidewalk were installed. However, if that's the desire of the council, the developer has no, no issues with installing that. So, if, if the council does want the improvements in this case, what we would recommend is that in the, if you so choose to approve the zone change, in the approval motion for the development agreement, that there be basically a motion to add that provision to the development agreement so that the, the curb gutter and sidewalk would be included in the development agreement. As, as written out, is not included.
Before you leave, Steve, looks like there's question. Okay, Mayor.
Oh, yes. Your statement was that in order to do that, they'd have to take out trees. And I say, wait a minute. There are other options. Put it in and don't take out the trees. There are ways to adjust that, I'm sure. Maybe the sidewalk goes behind the trees. I know that would interfere with some front yard and like, but I am almost positive a way could be found around that. It's just my comment.
So, the trees around the street? First what?
So, yeah, so Steve can, I'm sure, give further information on that, but given the nature of fifty-four fifty, and I can't picture in my mind, might be even good to just bring up Google Maps or something, but the trees are right there on the edge of the street. And so, the mayor's right, there's always ways to get around that, but within the normal parameters of how you would sidewalk, how you normally would do that would interfere. Wanted Steve to stay up there in case there are other questions from the council member is, at least to my memory and understanding, right there in the vicinity of that development and along most, if not all of fifty-four fifty, there's no sidewalk or very little sidewalk in the rest of the block. Is that correct or how correct is that?
Exactly. So, as you look along from thirty-fifth South to the south, the majority of the street, in fact, less than twenty percent has sidewalk or curb and gutter on the street currently. So, and again, the, when we look at the, the displacement of the trees, we're looking at, you know, if we do our typical curb gutter, park strip sidewalk would be where you would, you know, those would be displaced.
Okay, all right. So, the good news is the developer is amenable to really basically doing whatever the council's pleasure would be, but you do have choices to make.
Oh, go ahead.
Well, I would just say, when this project, when you had all these horse pastures and everything was agricultural and you had these great big lots, that was the ambiance and not having curb and gutter was fine. Although I think there are, there was at least one or two houses that had curb and gutter down on the east side, further to the south.
Yeah, there are.
But with these changes, when you put in a subdivision, that's different. It's no longer horse property, it's no longer agricultural, it's now a subdivision. And so, it would seem like that makes sense, but then I'm just kind of talking, having fun tonight, so.
My question is, what, what does public works think? Is there a place for water to flow along the gutter when it gets to the end?
Right, I mean, right now, it wouldn't, it wouldn't tie into, to anything along the, along the street. Eventually, those could be connected. The challenge would be that, as you look along the street, these are the, these are the last two or large kind of undeveloped pieces remaining. There's a few other places where we might see infill. And so, in our view, to, to eventually connect all those together would likely be a city project, just because there's just not, there's not that many more infill opportunities where a develop, a development could put those improvements in.
We're going to end up putting all the water from the subdivision, what we follow on the street, at the, whatever is the low end of that curb and gutter and whoever's property isn't part of this subdivision because they're just sitting next to it.
Yeah.
So, there's sidewalk, curb and gutter across the street from this project, the entire run. So, we have done it before on this street, and I agree with Mayor that it's changing its purpose. I was very surprised we did not have it in the agreement to put sidewalk curb and gutter on the other two that we did because it's just mandatory. I thought it would just be mandatory. So, I'll watch better for those in the future, but I think when we do our update on our general plan, we need to decide where sidewalk curb and gutter is going and where it's not, but I just think this will be millions of dollars. It'll cost the city to come put it in later. And it should just be put in now. And as this street progresses and changes to what it's going to be, it'll be very necessary for how many kids are on that to get to their school safely and everything else. It'll end up being a priority for us because of getting kids to schools and such. So, I think we just get it done now. Right now, I can only see maybe two trees that is not on the property with existing homes that would be taken out. So, maybe a total of four or five trees is all that would go out.
But I do think it's important to preserve some of that by not taking out the trees.
How about a meandering sidewalk?
I'm okay with it, meandering. I'm okay with it going around. In fact, I've seen subdivisions, not from West Valley, where that's been done. So.
So, did anybody go out from Parks and Rec and see, I mean, from Public Works to see what would really have to happen?
For design, I don't, I don't believe we had Public Works look at, actually designing that or engineering that.
Or what, you know, for sure which trees would have to go?
Yeah, there's not very many trees.
No, it's not like it's lined the whole way with trees. That's the other thing, that it's just perfect for a sidewalk curb and gutter there. Maybe we postpone it and have somebody go out and look and see really what the impact would be. Have Public Works or somebody go out and give us the true, what would have to come out. Lars is good at going down the street with his finger.
There is a storm drain on the other side of the street.
Yeah, so would that storm drain connect after thirty-fifth, then, if there's a storm drain in that other curbing?
I'll have to ask Dan on that. Dan, do you know?
Yeah, that's a combined storm drain and irrigation system that does go all the way to thirty-five hundred south.
Okay.
It's partially piped and partially open ditched.
Okay. So, it could just go to the ditch out until we get the whole thing, curb and gutter.
Council preference for a little overall direction.
That's on tonight's meeting, right? We'll have a motion.
True. Okay.
See what happens.
All right, very good.
Okay, that was one. Now, there are a couple other changes.
Yes.
Which, what are we doing next?
Let's see, GPZ fourteen dash twenty twenty-one. This is the, let's see.
The mall subdivision?
No, this is the parking question.
Thirty-two.
Finished my, like, unfinished business, yes. And so, Steve has a little more information on this one as well.
Yes, thank you. And Nicole, if you're able to allow me to share my screen, I'll pull up and show the, the changes that have been, been made. Great, thank you. So, this, this first slide was what we reviewed at our, our previous meeting. So, you recall, under this concept, each unit had a two-car garage and then each unit had a driveway that was deep enough to park in. And during the discussion, there was concern that there should be additional parking for visitors. So, the latest concept that is also reflected in the, the newest development agreement is this next slide. And so, you'll notice just the, really the primary difference here is if in this image, if you look in the, the top right, where you see that five-unit building, that one goes to three, so they've essentially eliminated two units and then added sixteen surface stalls. So, those are located at the end of each of the kind of drive courts as well as on the west end by the, the play area. So, you have sixteen stalls there. And then, while they're not striped, there is space along the east-west running street to have parking on at least one, one side of the street, which would provide at least the opportunity for eight more stalls along at least that one street. So, there's sixteen that would be striped and then the potential for eight more along the street under this latest concept.
So, I, no, I should put glasses on to tell you. So, does that say thirty-five hundred or thirty-six hundred west?
It's thirty-two, thirty-two hundred west, actually. So, it's just, it's a typo.
Okay, thank you. I just don't have my glasses. So, I really appreciate them adding this much parking. Have we decided as a city that we're going to mark thirty-two as no parking?
So, don't, no, that's been decided at this point. We were, we were a little more assuming that parking wouldn't be allowed here, and so, just again, focusing on parking internally.
Yeah.
So.
Parking internally, but I just want to make sure we're going to have no parking on thirty-two as well.
Additionally, yeah, when we had that council, or at least that discussion amongst council, or at least first time that I remember hearing it. So, I remember the council saying, yeah, you have, guys, absolutely go out there and, and shut down parking on thirty-two hundred. However, we have that ability at staff level anytime, anyway, and I, my preference and tendency would be to, there's no room to park on thirty-two hundred now, the way it's striped, much less here. So, my predilection would be that, yes, we just go market, no parking on that.
I mean, if we market now, then there's just no question that, well, when I came and looked at it, there was no, no parking signs.
But the shoulder's only this wide. If anyone did try to park half their, more than half their car would be in the traffic lane. And so, I don't know that sign is that necessary.
Well, that's how it was in Lake Park.
Yeah.
There was only this much. And then, because everybody parked there, we just redrew another line, and I don't want that to happen. Because to me, that was a part, that was a bike lane.
Yeah.
But they moved the line. Now, people park there and it's a big danger. So, with all those school kids, that's a bad place. But for this one, I would just rather have it posted so that there's no question of where they can park when they buy the unit.
Now, with this proposed plan, as you have it up here, there is also a downside.
And what's that?
And the downside is that if things go as they have in other parts of the city, there exists a real possibility that those visitor parking spaces will be used by tenants as additional parking. And there's nothing to prevent that, but I just bring that up. That also opens up the possibility that you could get, you know, a larger family or several friends together in one of those apartments and they could fill up the garage with junk and park their cars out front and then down the street.
What do you suggest, Mayor?
I, I wish I had an answer, Lars, but there is no answer. The, that's, that's a downside and we just need, I just brought it up for you to be aware of. I won't be here, but this issue of parking is a double-edged sword. I mean, you want people to be able to come here and live and have parking. But as soon as you do that in some locations, and I think it's more true in apartment complexes, those spaces get used by the tenants. Now, that's not a bad thing. It's not a bad thing, but I just say it's.
That would be up to the HOA or whoever was managing that.
But see, this parking issue, just, just a fascinating issue. Because everything you do to fix it, you create another problem. I'm not opposed to this. I just it's my last chance to speak on parking.
So, Steve, does the new solution, is that in the, the, the application as it stands, or do they need, does the council need to make any?
So, the development agreement reflects the, the reduced stalls and these other stalls.
I actually do like this plan better than the other. And certainly better than the previous one. We just discussed where it was curving. I still like that plan, you know, so. Anything else on that?
Not on that one.
Okay, third item, Mayor. We have, yeah, somebody asked, yeah, it's the new business, SMI six dash twenty twenty-one on the Valley Fair. Subdivision lots. And for this one, although Steve may be called upon for some planning expertise, we view this question as, as mostly illegal interpretation of our existing ordinance. I believe Eric was going to address this at the beginning.
Thanks, Mayor and Council. We, we discussed this a lot during the course of the last week and my office and the planning office looked over the statute, looked over the ordinances and, and the application. And it is our recommendation or our opinion, as you saw in that, in that memo that we issued, that it is a legal subdivision. And we base that on our interpretation of the definition, that's the same word, of shopping center. And so, we go to seven-one-one oh-three in our ordinance, and we look at shopping center and it says, "A group of retail and other commercial establishments built on a site which is planned, developed, operated, and managed as an operating unit." And that's what we believe in our opinion that we've got here. Mr. Pastrick focuses on the word site and not parcel. And I think that's, I think that's very true. And I, I kind of focused on those four four elements, because that's what, I guess, an old prosecutor tends to do more is the elements of, of a thing and its planned, developed, operated, and managed as an operating unit. So, that is our opinion on the subdivision. We believe it's legal going forward tonight.
So, we understand there may actually be some confusion and/or question that seems appropriate, but yeah, we've looked at this for or more ways, various staff level, and it just, in our opinion, both by past treatment and the application as it's set up, it's, it's what it is. And that doesn't mean, by the way, that the council can't somehow modify that policy, change that look in future action or how we treat, and of course, how we treat new or existing development, but of course, that is the process we would have to go through.
Well, to me, because this is so, it had to take a legal stand to tell us what the definition was. I'm not comfortable with it until we changed it so anybody with a twenty thousand square foot piece of land could build a more than one tenant building. So, I'm not comfortable unless we clean up our language before we approve this, approving this.
Okay, now, the mayor-elect and I had a little discussion on this before the meeting. And I raised an issue, which I think is, might be germane to this discussion, and that is, I said, "The Valley Fair Mall is like our downtown. This is our walkable community. And we don't have an area like Midvale or Murray or these other places where there was this developed downtown. And if you go to that, oftentimes, you have, and I've seen it in many cities, you'll have businesses, one right after the other, right on the sidewalk, so to speak. And then, there's a little bit of parking on the street. In fact, if you watch the movies, you see them all the time, these little towns. Well, if that's our downtown, does that make it different? Because the parking lot driveways are the downtown streets, and these are the closest we'll ever get to a downtown where we have all these stores together. And should that be different from strip malls and other parts of our city where it's all spread out? To some degree, we want to have all of these businesses right there, close, because that's, that's our downtown. So, looking at it that way kind of gave me a different perspective. Because that's, that's our downtown. So looking at it that way kind of gave me a different perspective. I don't quite know how to handle that. But I almost think that, you know, with this city center development concept, if we ought to have it different there and only there because of this mall and downtown concept. I don't know. That's something the council will have to decide. But I wanted to give you that perspective that maybe there should be a difference here versus other areas of the city. Cause I certainly look at it that way.
Well, my problem is, is the subdividing after the fact. So it's not how we planned it. But I'm still, it's not in the ordinance like that. It's, you know, we don't allow anybody else to do it on just twenty thousand square feet. So unless we change an ordinance that allows that, I think we're just getting ourselves into trouble.
But we have allowed it right at the Wimco and at the Target.
Yeah.
Because it's all part of the site.
Right, right. And that's, that's what I'm relying on in that interpretation is the fact that we, we've, have smaller parcels on larger sites that we've, that we've done before.
That are strip malls.
Well, like the shopping centers, like the Wimco.
Correct. But their outbuildings are little strip malls. And each building is individually sectioned up or each, so each business owns its own walls.
I'm not, is that right, Mr. Pastrick? Sorry. Parcels.
So that parcel has four businesses. So I guess maybe we just need to bring our half acre lots for strip malls up to an acre, I mean, from an acre down to the half acre. And then it fits in with what we've been doing, whether it's right or wrong. It probably wasn't in our ordinance correctly.
No, no. When the ordinance was changed, we did the ordinance exactly and by policy as the council directed to do. But that didn't preclude anything that was already in ordinance and set up previous to that, which this is. That's the situation you have.
Well, we have allowed other ones after, and I guess it just didn't compute in my brain.
Right.
That we were allowing strip malls on less than an acre.
Right now. And so to that point, you could go back and change the policy on that decision that was made and change that size again. But really frankly, from a legal and a planning standpoint, that has nothing to do with this, right?
Well, so I guess.
From a legal opinion standpoint, from an ownership standpoint, from how it was originally approved and how the law is set up, not just at our level, but at least as I understand it, at the state statute level as well. The owner of the property has complied with every bit of our zoning ordinance and application process that they need to. This is an administrative action, just like any final plot, correct?
Yeah. Well, I guess my problem is the fact that the attorneys had to tell us if it was legal or not, or in our ordinances.
Well.
Where, because we're not allowing them on that size. If each one of those lots was an acre.
Yeah.
Done. Easy.
Yeah. Well.
And that's just my, in my brain, the interpretation and what we're doing elsewhere, keeping it fair and a level playing ground.
Which you're trying to do. But you're also trying to.
So that's why I don't want to.
Planning principles in place that you as a council wanted, which is what the last decision was.
Right.
Now you have this new information that you may, as a council, want to go back and examine for those parcels again. Which is basically what you're saying, right? All I'm saying is, for the particular action that's in front of you, that's a whole different issue.
Yeah, and see, and I'm not seeing it different. But that's okay.
You're, you're a little bit distorted, sir.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah.
But I, I don't know much about, well, here, I, I, my career, my, my experience. And I, I, I see the parcel like this, a whole, you know, many small buildings and tend to have small problem than is the ownership have their own parcel. Because when they have a big lot like this and multiple buildings, they will form the CCR. And then when CCR, when they have a CCR and basically it's, it's owner relies, ship their responsibility over to CCR. And then CCR couldn't, you know, I seen that a couple of times already in my career, okay? And they couldn't provide enough services to each one of them and tenants and, and turn it to the problem. And sometimes they go to court for that. And I don't want, I don't want that happen right here in a corner nearby the city hall. So the ownership, its ownership has their own, his or her own parcel. They take more responsibility than the one is shipped over to the CCR. Okay? And that's the key, the critical point right there.
Sorry. I, I, I understand. And again, in, as, as my job to interpret the statute, I, I have to go to the definition and, and I look at that definition. My people look at that definition, the planners look at that definition as, as a shopping center still. You parcel those out, you don't parcel them out, doesn't matter. It's a shopping center under our, under our code.
So you're here also, yeah, you brought it up and I will bring this one up. So developer or builder, they tend to avoid this situation. Yeah, they don't want to cause a problem for the future, you know, on the ownership. Go back to Kenland, her point right there, about half acre to one acre, that's going to the problem too. Why happen right here in other corner in other cities, we cannot do that, the same thing. So it is, is, I don't know, it's not flying to me. Thank you.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Eric, but because this is an administrative action and the boxes have been checked and there's no ask here other than to acknowledge that they've done everything. If we don't, if we deny this application, they have a right to sue us. They'll win. Exhibit A will be our minutes and our memo saying that our own lawyers have told us that they have a right to do this. And we're just gonna, it's gonna happen and we're gonna spend a lot of money fighting a losing case.
Yeah, unfortunately, that's the state of the law.
Okay, with that understanding, then the discussion can be that we need to clarify it and the council can move forward with further discussion for the future. For future actions similar to this.
Clarifying the shopping center definition, the acre thing.
And, and that's fine, but that would be for a future council meeting, actually a future council. I promise not to remind you more than thirty or forty times on that.
Is this your last meeting?
I resemble that. I used to be still. Okay.
Thanks, Eric.
Now.
One last item. Yep. Yeah. And this is much easier than the, the weighty planning issues. So on our RDA meeting of January fourth, because of how the officer setup is changing, we will need a temporary chair identified tonight, correct Nicole? So that we have a chair to act for the RDA in that meeting. So. Okay, good. Perfect. That's the only thing I had there.
Wasn't there a change on the transportation resolution?
There are some updates that have happened. Oh, on the resolution. All right, okay.
And.
They were asked adding Plan Six.
So further details regarding option six were, were added into the resolution.
So they were added, they were in place in the resolution as the council.
Yeah, but that was a change.
But it is a change, yes.
So. I'm just calling that a. Because in there made reference to. Oh, there, they did add it there, the conceptual layout. Because they made reference to option six or what was it called? Yeah, option. And. I just needed clarification on which one that was. Where are the slip ramps? Oh, there they are. I see one there. Okay, this is the one that has the options of the slip ramps. Here at various locations. And the council, when they discussed this, actually indicated that they liked this option. I remember that we got it down to two options, but they were similar. So, so that was the change. Remember when I brought up the issue of, we still want to have, it can't be nothing there. It has to have some slip ramps. And so by making this reference, that clarified that. I think when I looked at the resolution. It just put in parentheses, Bangor Highway Study Option Number Six. Are everyone okay with that? And we can even bring this up and show that if it's necessary. Okay. And option number six. Okay. Then with that, we'll go back to, that covered all the changes.
Yes.
Okay. Then. We're ready for the public hearing, I guess. And this is on reopening the current fiscal year budget with ordinance twenty-one dash sixty-eight.
Yes, sir. It's that time of the quarter again.
Yeah. This is a long one.
Well, it appears longer than normal. That's just because we included the budget openings that had been approved previously. Got a council request to see what those were. So you've got two groups. You've got the three rollovers.
Okay.
Right. So the group itself of budget openings for this quarter is not particularly long or unusual. But it might seem like that because the other ones have been tacked on the.
Well, I saw that previously approved budget opening. I wasn't sure if that meant we had approved them individually, but not complete.
The last quarters.
Oh, you mean I have to read the title, like with the July?
He put it in bright red letters for us.
Well, I read that.
Okay.
You can lead a horse to water, but you can't make him drink. Do you have any questions on any items there on this proposed budget opening? Many of these were rollovers and grants. In the other, there weren't that many, but even some of those were reimbursements. And funding that we received in the time. Or is this the second half of it where you allocated the funds to spend?
Most of them are, there's eleven items in that category. And like you said, Mayor, most of them are just receipt of funds for various projects. There might be one or two that are expenditures out, let's see off the top of my head. But we could have Jim come up and run through them if there are any of them that you all have questions on, would like to look at.
Well, as I looked at them, they sure looked like they were all.
Almost all of them are. Like the first one, however, is not. That's more the.
Oh, overtime.
The fire overtime and special equipment.
Transfer from.
And then was reimbursed by the, by the, the state funds and the out of state funds for those same purposes.
And then what about family fitness center, two vehicles? Was that a purchase too?
Yes.
So, okay, the others I think were all revenue based. Any clarifications or questions on any? Hearing, none? Okay. Consent agenda item. For. I guess it's a resolution twenty-one dash two fifteen. This is a, an ADA requirement on a change we're making for that. So we've seen a lot of those before. This is just same thing, different location. Four hundred and twenty-five dollars, so. Hearing no comments on that, then we're ready for communication, strategic plan presentation for Parks and Recreation.
Okay, we'll have Nancy come on up.
Thank you, Nancy Day, Parks and Recreation Director. I appreciate the opportunity to come and talk to you a little bit just for a few minutes about our Parks and Recreation Department. All right. So we're going to go ahead and get started here. As you are very aware, we have quite a few divisions within our department. The newest being the Arts and Culture Division that we acquired this year. And we're thrilled to have them be a part of our team. In every single one of these divisions, we have outstanding staff who really care very much about what they do and they care very much about the community that they serve. And so we're really lucky to have those individuals all working here. And you've heard me talk before about quality of life and how important and essential Parks and Recreation is for the quality of life for our citizens. I add a generational quality of life at the title here because we really feel like what we're doing and, and our vision is not just the services we're providing today in our community, but for years to come. And so we look at that as part of the bigger picture of what we're accomplishing and what we're doing for our community. So we have put together a little video for you to watch that shows just a taste of some of the events and some of the things that, that we've done in the divisions over this next year. So I think you'll enjoy this much better than listening to me talk about it. So. So I think you'll enjoy this much better than listening to me talk about it, so. All right, so that's a lot. We have a lot of fun in our department and we enjoy providing services for the community. So like I said, that's just a taste of some of the things they do. So let's jump right in here and talk about the different divisions. Family Fitness Center. So of course, it's not just the facility, but the staff there do all of the recreation programs for the city and most of the events that you see. So I'm, I'm going to talk just a little bit about some of the numbers under number one there. Facility use and program numbers are down just a little bit still. We still have some memberships that are frozen from the pandemic. They haven't felt comfortable enough to come back, but it's not much. Programs are down a little bit, not because of that. We're back to, to pre-COVID. You know, protocols with the programs. The problem with that has been staffing. We've had to turn a lot of people away from some of the programs because we didn't have enough staff to accommodate them. So we're working on that to get some staff to build those numbers back up. But again, it's a very small difference. Revenue for the past fiscal year, you can see there was an increase of one hundred and seventy-four thousand from the year previous. Moving the right direction. And one thing that you'll see on this slide and several other slides is I did a comparison of the first four months of this fiscal year compared to last fiscal year because we really want to track where we're going as we're coming out of the pandemic. And you can see for the Fitness Center in the first four months are up one hundred and fifty thousand from first four months of last year. So we're definitely seeing a good trend there. Yes.
This is the difference? This is how much it's up, or that's what it was total in the past?
That's, that's the total for the four months.
Okay.
Yes, so great question. Yes, yes, exactly. Outdoor pool was a hit. This year was the first year where we could run it fully for the entire summer. And it, they, they did a great job, had lots of people that came out and really enjoyed the outdoor pool. And, and then I just listed a few of the recreation, like you don't see the youth sports or adult sports or a lot of those things on there. I just listed a few things there. I will point out Farmers Market, we're still working on the logistics to hopefully get it out at Centennial Park, and we've been in communication with the mall because the mall does want to do a farmers market in their parking lot. So you may see a collaboration with us and them there, and then also maybe being able to set one up on the, the west side of town. And then, of course, the summer lunch program that's normally in our parks. The last two years, the schools have had to do this at the school, which impacts parks. So their goal is this year to be able to bring it, bring it back to our city parks. Golf courses just knocked it out of the park. They had record years. As you can imagine, you know, being outside, it's been amazing. You can see the number of rounds are up at both golf courses, total revenues up. The player pass increased by almost three hundred thousand dollars from the year previous. And then, of course, tournaments, and you can see the events. Besides tournaments that our Food and Beverage hosted and took care of is up dramatically. Weddings are starting to come back, family parties, all of that. So we're seeing some tremendous numbers there, and the golf courses are doing a fantastic job. Helping that work. So our newest division, Arts and Culture, so on this, we're going to look at the current fiscal year and how that compared to the entire twelve-month year and year that ended the end of June. And so I'm going to go off each of their areas here. The Utah Cultural Celebration Center, you can see participation numbers for the first four months, just over fifteen thousand. The entire year last year was about thirty-eight hundred. Again, we're seeing trends going the right direction there. Same thing with revenue. A great increase. So we're moving the right direction. The Performing Arts Center, the theater. Again, they couldn't really have a full year last year, but this year they're back and they're moving the right direction. And I was able to present on that not too long ago to each of you. The art and cultural experiences, which is really so critical and an important part of this division. The visual arts, this would be the gallery exhibits, those types of things. Last year, they were all online. And in the first four months, we've been able to have the ten exhibits. Art Rageous, as you recall, last year during COVID, they had the kickoff with the online Art Rageous program, which was a hit and did very well. And they've still been able to do some of those online while we get back on track, but also they were able to do some of the school groups at the theater, and we'll continue to do some of those in-person items. Last year, it was all online for concerts. We've been able to bring those back. So again, we're really happy with the direction we're going. And last year, we weren't able to have the Day of the Dead, and that is back. So we are definitely excited about the future there. And then you can see the grants and sponsorships awarded, received the first four months this year and then the full year last year. So we're feeling really positive about that. There are in the facilities here, a little bit of work capital-wise that needs to be done with the roofing and some of those types of things, but the staff is very conscientious and, and we're doing what we can on that. And we appreciate any assistance that we get from each of you as well. Harmon Senior Recreation Center. So you can see the number of seniors. And you can see, again, we looked at the first four months of this year and last year. I flipped in there, sorry about that. A bottom number is this fiscal year. And so we were over eleven hundred, four forty last year, and then you can see on the participation numbers dramatic increase. What I really wanted to point out in this slide was the meals served. We have a tremendous need in our senior population in West Valley City, and you can see that in these meals. From just two years ago, just over seven thousand to over twelve thousand this year that just finished. So we are definitely providing a much-needed service for these individuals. And it's not only the food, but it's also the connections that they're making, the camaraderie and, and all of that that comes along with it, so. And the last slide is on our park maintenance and park planning. So on the left, you see the maintenance divisions that we have within this division. Staff work very, very hard in each of these areas. City acreage that is maintained is over three hundred and sixty-one acres, so miles of trails. We got almost four new miles this last year with Mount View Corridor. And when the staff maintaining the trails, just that, so you understand that, it's not just the trail itself, but it's on either side of the trail, and in many cases from fence to fence. So it's quite a bit of property that they have to maintain when they look at the trail systems. Water usage, I wanted to point this out. So the whole goal, I guess you could say, this year where we had such a bad drought was to survive and not thrive. So we didn't want to put our parks in a situation where we were going to have a hard time bringing them back, but we really wanted to be cognizant and and of the drought and what we needed to do as a city. So we, you probably noticed that, actually, in some of the parks, if you saw some weeds coming through or some dry areas, right? You're not watering it as much for the grass to grow, the weeds are going to come up instead. So you probably, you may have seen that in some of your neighborhood parks. We use twenty-three point one four inches. And we always measure our usage compared to the Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District. And what they used, actually, I wrote it down here because I thought it was quite significant. They use thirty-nine point seven inches. So we were really able to maintain and do some really good things for a lot less water. Our golf courses, the water use was a little bit higher, but we were still quite a bit lower than the Jordan Valley. So we appreciated that. You can see some of the other information there. Graffiti was up this past year. We're hoping it starts to trend back down. We end up spending about an extra sixteen thousand dollars in graffiti removal in the parks. And then just on the needs, staffing, thank you very much for the extra staff we were able to receive in our program mod last year with the addition of the new Salt Lake County Parks. It helped us tremendously. You can, we, we still have more needs, but that was very, a very good thing for us, and it really did help. Our acreage per FTE is fourteen point seven eight. You may recall from before, we were at sixteen point two-two. And actually, the fourteen point seven eight is, includes unimproved areas. So we're actually closer to fourteen point two for landscaped properties, which puts us right about exactly where Murray is for their FTEs. A lot of the other communities are closer to that nine and ten, and we've always said if we could get to that ten to twelve, then that would make a huge difference. And, and we're getting there. We're working that way. And then, of course, there's capital improvement still that we're working on. We have some playgrounds that are so old, we can't get replacement parts. So we're doing what we can to keep them, you know, working well, but, but we're working on those year by year, knocking some of those out. Park design is the last area that I'd like to talk about. We do have some standards that we try to follow when we're looking at park design. Besides location, we want to look at the safety elements of the park itself. If PD is patrolling, we want to be sure they can look through and see through the park. So we really design things according to help with that. And we want the public to feel safe. We want right, the, the lighting that's correctly. We don't want hidden things. So we take that into account. Activity options would be things like the playgrounds and the surfacing that we have for that. And those types of options are game zones or exercise equipment. And again, we try to be really conscientious with the funding that we do have for that. We currently average about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars for a playground with, with kind of a mixed surfacing. You've seen us do some of the turf for inclusive reasons, but then some natural. So it comes to about that. My colleague I was just talking to in Draper, they're just finishing a million-dollar playground. So the numbers fluctuate quite a bit, but we feel like we're really providing some good opportunities for our neighborhood parks with what we're doing. And then, of course, we always look at maintenance and conservation. That's very important to us. We don't want to create a park that now I need to, to talk to each of you and say we need two more people to maintain that particular park. So, excuse me, we really try to work on, on all of those things. The connectivities, parks to the trails, vice versa, how people can get through everything. And then, as I mentioned in a presentation not long ago, the land acquisition properties that we are working on currently. So with that, are there any questions I can answer for you? Great.
On the land acquisition, are those ones that we have acquired or we're, we're still working on it?
The top two, let me see if I can go back. Sorry, I guess I can't. Oh, there we go. So the Brock property and the Crane property. The Brock property, we're just in kind of a final, we had to do a new appraisal because when we met again with the family, they wanted to shift things a little bit. So we're just about done with that, but we're, we're pretty confident that that's not going to be a problem. They're pretty excited about it. The, kind of the family legacy. The Crane property, that's the property on the corner by Westview Park there. And they're not sure if they want to build another home on the property or not, but they're, they're leaning towards maybe wanting to sell to the city. So it's not a sure deal, but we've had some really good conversations with them. The Condi property is owned by a developer, and so we're not sure where that's going to go right now. All right. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Anything on the calendar? Potential future agenda items? Council reports? Mayor-elect and I were over and Councilman June to the Raising Cane's ribbon cutting and brand opening. Amazing organization and certainly has a devoted following as there was a line at the door. They expect that to continue for a while. So interesting. No other reports, then we'll review our meetings for January four. And what's on the agenda? I didn't look at these.
These are all, if I remember correctly, the adoption of the officer rotation list for the various agencies.
Okay. And there's no need for a closed session, I was told.
No, sir.
I didn't have much, I didn't have a meeting with Wayne because I won't be here for the next meeting, so there was no need for me to study those items. Although before we adjourn here. We had a fun little activity, but both Councilman Bueller and I will, this is our last study meeting. Unless you change the schedule, but I'm not encouraging that.
You're good.
I'm not encouraging. And so, as we traditionally do, don't have meetings so much around the holidays. But for my part, I know it's been great, been a fascinating experience. Have appreciated your differing viewpoints and your differing interests because that added a great deal to this council. It was, it's just been a great experience to be here and participate in this. Now, I'm moving on. You've got a new mayor in line to take over, and you've got a new council member is going to be coming on, and then a, another one that I don't know who it is, going to come and work with you. And as always, the city moves on, just keeps functioning. So. Just thank you for your, all your work over the last several years. Jake hasn't been here as long as some of the others, but it's been fun to get to know him and his perspective as he's come. And so, good experience. And Steve, thank you for all your work. Now you get to go and earn some real money.
We'll see. Well, you've still got fifty-five minutes, man.
No, when I adjourn, then the study meeting is over.
I'm sure nobody wants to leave early. You have a captive audience. But that was a nice ceremony that they had today, well deserved. And this is a good place to. Serve.
Yeah. Well, yeah, I must admit, I, I still haven't figured out why my key card stops working and I can't get it.
That shouldn't be happening, Mayor. So I don't know. We'll, we'll figure that out.
Steve didn't have a chair.
Yeah.
We'll have to go find it.
They're ready to move on. Well, it's, it's great as well to be in this country where these types of changes occur with minimal impact. And no gunfire, no bloodshed, you know, kind of thing. It's great. It's truly a marvelous system. People, a lot of people say it's a terrible system, and I say that's true. The only thing worse is every other system they have around the world. Because they don't work nearly as well. Well, with that, we can sit around, visit till our six-thirty meeting, but.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. That's, oh, that's a good idea. Motion to adjourn without objection. Then we will be adjourned. Hearing no objection, we're adjourned and it's unanimous. Thank you all. And to all the staff and that, thank you so much for being here.